It's a order. If we could do a red call.
I'm excited.
Red call, you got it.
I'm excited to student school.
I'm Ann Bickel, Director of Student Services.
Patrick Gordon, Principal of Sunapee Central Mount Terry School.
Sean Williams, Principal, Sunapee Middle High School.
May I ask your school board?
Your school board.
Do you need an annual school board?
Scott Brooks, School Board.
Ed Anderson, School Board.
Wes Holden, Superintendent.
Kelly Weston, Business Administrator.
Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the Republic, which stands one nation, under our individual and collective justice.
I want to be looking for a motion to approve the school board meeting minutes.
Make a motion to approve the December sixth, twenty twenty-three school board meeting minutes.
Any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Looking for a motion to approve the minutes of December sixth, twenty twenty-three, ABC.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the ABC meeting on December sixth, twenty twenty-three.
I'll second.
Questions? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
I propose a passes. And the agenda review?
Um, nothing yet.
Looking for the SMHS presentation.
Well, so Mrs. Parsons is here today. Um, so one of the, you know, when we get our MEAS visit, and this certainly predates our MEAS visit, but one of the really uh important things for our students is our social and civic expectations. In fact, I had a principal advisory meeting just yesterday when we were talking about the social and civic expectations. How well we think our students do with the social and civic expectations. Um, and I think a big part of that, um, obviously is just to pick the students and the community and the family, but also there's a lot of things that we offer for the students in order to give back to the community. I think, uh, perhaps the biggest piece is the service club. And so the service club, um, is run, advised by Mrs. Parsons, who's here tonight to present, and Mrs. Watkins. And just provide a lot of opportunities for students to get out in the community and to help. We have a lot of kids who really want to do that, and sometimes we have kids who are like, well, I want to do it, but what can I do? And, and I think the service, the service club does a great job of doing that. And in particular, um, the empty bowls is part of that as well. So Mrs. Parsons is going to present a little bit on that.
So Service Club has twenty series, one, I will myself, and Mrs. Watkins. Um, we've worked together for the last eight years on this. And it's open to sixth through twelfth grade, so any student who wants to participate can participate. And the nice thing about it is they don't have to commit to the whole year report. So they say, I want to contribute, but I'd really like to do food drive or something of that sort. They can just participate in that piece if they want. It doesn't have to be the entire year. So we can still gather kids that are, let's say they're busy athletes, um, and they're in between seasons, and they're like, what can I do? And they'll just tell a couple of weeks, um, which is great. So our mission for this really is setting around our core values and beliefs. So our mission really is to prepare students to be positive, caring, and contributing members of society. So you see a lot of our activities really center around that. And to help them make connections with the local community and appreciate that they are part of that broader global community. And also understand that the success of a community depends on the people in that community and that do help others. Um, so that's our focus. There's a lot of things that we do. Um, we've had clothing drives, we've had traditional food drives, we send students down to the elementary school as mentors. We have a tutoring program that happens, um, just about every morning in my classroom. And it's a mixture of the Service Club and the National Honor Society students who come down. And they're just available for middle school students who might need help with a question on their homework, or to study for a test and so forth. And then we try to create a comfortable environment. We just, we can come in for five minutes, you can come in for half an hour, um, but that's, that's a great service that they help provide. Um, they've assisted with a lot of different community events, like the chatter challenge, the Halloween in, in the harbor, that Christmas in the harbor. A lot of those programs just can't run without a lot of people helping out, so they're a great help for that. They've been to the Sunapee Cove a number of times, doing different group games and activities. They even had a student once, um, teach a painting class to the residents there, which was great. And they volunteered at the Abbott Library and the thrift shop. So those are just some of the events. Some of the bigger ones that we are, we do, um, one of them is the blood drive we've had every year. The nice part about the blood drive is we can kind of find one of our juniors or seniors, or a couple of them that are strong leaders, and kind of put them in charge of that. So not only are they part of helping the event, they're starting to learn how to organize that type of event. Um, so they work with the Red Cross and set it all up, figure out the times, and they make all the appointments and stuff. That's not us doing it. So it's great, it's a great first leadership role. It's also a great opportunity for students who have never given blood, who want to do it kind of in a comfortable environment that they're familiar with. So we get a lot of first timers that are eighteen that come in and do it, which is great. We also had, this year, there was, one of the new things that we started was, um, on November thirteenth, it's World Kindness Day. So we wanted to do a little something just to spread that kindness to the school. So the couple of weeks before that, we got a couple hundred cups, and we wrote all these little, nice little kindness messages on them. And then on the thirteenth, in the cafeteria at lunchtime, everybody could come up, get a cup of hot cocoa, and enjoy it for the day with, um, the messenger. This is a picture of some of our students for food drive, but they, no, sorry, that's the clothing drive. This one was kind of a neat project. So we also say to the students, you know, is there something that you're passionate about, that you want to help out in the community, you have an idea for? Um, and this student on the left, Casey, he wanted to do, it's called the teal pumpkin. I had never heard about, about it before, but he had, and he wanted to, um, create this in Sunapee. So we know that Halloween night on Central Street is pretty, pretty busy. So the idea of a teal pumpkin is that if you have a teal pumpkin outside your house, you're indicating that you have a nut-free candy for, for those students, for the kids. So he wanted to try to build that in the community. So the first year he got, I think, four or five houses that agreed, and then the next year he got a few more. So, um, something he wanted to start, and we helped support him, create flyers, help him contact people and so forth. So we try to encourage them to come up with their own ideas, too. This is just a trip to the Cove. It's always a treat. And then as Mrs. Williams mentioned, empty bowls, that's really been our, um, our biggest event, and it's grown over the years. Um, it was not our idea, uh, twenty, thirty years ago in Michigan, and our teacher just said, what, what wouldn't it be a great idea to create all these bowls? And have a dinner, and have the funds go to food pa, the local food pantries. And that has just grown across the country. So we took that idea and kind of ran with it. Um, again, that was seven years ago when we started it. Um, and we've teamed up a little bit with the livery, and that's where we've had it. Some of you may have been to the empty bowl event. Um, but we've raised a lot of money over the years and have been able to contribute to, um, Food Scare City in our community, which has been fun. So I'll show you a little bit about how that's changed over these years. This is just one, um, poster that we made, and when we had started it, we had a few successful years, and then COVID hit. So we did, we didn't want to give it up. So we had a takeout that, that first year, and it was kind of fun because we did it right here at the school with the, um, foods room. But we had some students who were outside playing their saxophones and their instruments. So when people drove up, they got the music, and they got the food, and off they went. Um, so that was successful for that year, but then it started to grow that people were interested in the takeout. Um, we were kind of trying to do both, sit down and takeout, which was a little bit hectic. Um, but we were finding, like, I think what a lot of us have found, that after COVID, people start to stay home more, and they weren't. One of the nice things about the first few dinners that we had was that everybody socialized and met with community and sat with people that they hadn't sat with for a while. So we kind of wanted to bring that back, so we changed it up a little bit this year. This is one of the older ones on the left was a, um, the first year that we did it, we had this flyer that explained kind of the history and the story of what empty bowl is. And then we always create a, um, menu. Um, most of the time it's soups and so forth that are made by the students, and desserts. This is showing some students making some apple crisps, as you can imagine. Um, we were looking at like fifty people, um, to make a dinner for, which was pretty good. Here we are making a bunch of bowls. So over the years, there have been many pottery bowls made. That's just, uh, one of the table settings. And, and really, part of it is learning how to set a table. Here's a group of students that, this is a few years ago, that were ready, um, for our guest. I also want to mention that, um, that Lexi in the middle there, she took that on as her senior project. A couple of kids, um, taking on as a senior project, which has been great for us, because then we just kind of stepped back a little bit, let them take over. Um, so it's always something that's an option for students to do for senior project. We even had both, the two students that did that, um, I don't remember exactly where it came from, but they wrote, um, essays about it, stories about it, and won some scholarship money for themselves and for our program, which was pretty exciting. So, this was the first year that, after the fact, then we went shopping, because we had to buy all this food for the food pantry. Um, so that was a lot of fun. And stocking and filling the bags. And then we deliver the bags to the police department, and they bring them to the families that they have listed in need. So I want to talk a little bit about this year's and how it changed. So, um, we really sat down ahead of time and said, we want to, we want to bring this up a notch and see what we can do. So we decided it would be a kind of neat idea to team up a little bit more with the livery. The livery had been having dinners and concerts, um, in the last year, and they had been pretty well received. So I was like, why don't we just, why don't we try that? So teamed up with them, and they took on the responsibility of finding a musician, um, and finding sponsors to pay for that musician. So that wasn't on our shoulders. They helped us with advertisements and so forth. So in that first meeting, I was like, my goal is eighty people. And I go, we can try that, and we've had forty, fifty, you know? Um, so, of course, I don't know what I was getting myself into. But, so we, we put that goal together with the idea that the Service Club themselves would take care of all the other pieces, the foods, the bowls, the setting it all up and so forth. That's one of my favorite pictures of it. Um, so, on the right is the flyer that we used for that stuff. This is the musician that we got, he was great. Um, we were able to charge forty dollars a ticket versus the twenty that we were charging before, because we had the musician. But the nice part was the musician was paid for, um, so that all of that money could go back to the program. So still same idea, had the bowls, but we fancied up the dinner a little bit, too. So you'll see the menu in a minute. Those are the bowls being made, with my goal at the eighty people. So here we have finished bowls on the left, and then we have some students helping with the glazing, which is huge help. This is, um, then it comes time for making all the breads. Well, by the way, I should go back a second. So when I said my goal was eighty, um, we, we, it became live on the website on a Monday. And on Thursday, I got a call saying, at the year at school, saying, um, we're at eighty-five. And I'm like, stop, just stop right now. So we sold out in four days, which was amazing. So, and, and the nice thing about it was, it was a different crowd. It was, it was a good variety of people from all over the community, which we wanted to try to build that more and get some more people in. So then we have the task of, now we've got to feed all these people, right? So here we have, if you look on the right, that, that's, um, Mrs. Cludier, she has kind of a side business on bread making. So, um, asked her if she'd like to get involved, so she volunteered to teach them all how to make sourdough bread. And so they did that a couple of afternoons after school and made sixteen loaves of sourdough bread. The kids loved it. On the left side, as you can imagine, again, for eighty-five people, how many carrots we had to peel and chop, and potatoes and so forth. On the right side, you'll see the menu from this year, and that one, a, a little bit different. Like, like I said, we had a salad, the sourdough bread, we had a parmesan, a crust of chicken, and honey glazed carrots, and scalloped potatoes, and then pie and ice cream. Um, the menu there, I wanted to point out, um, was created by our garden club. So the garden club, um, in September, we did a whole project on pressing flowers. So we went out and cut flowers all around the school, pressed them, and then we used them to make the menus, um, for that event. So it's kind of nice to get other groups involved. Then we had the evening, this was, these were our beautiful greeters at the door, all excited to see people. This was our team for that night, so we had twenty-three of them there. Um, and they were all, we kept them all busy with eighty-five people. So some of them were servers, some of them were just taking care of the waters in the cups, some of them were doing dishes, um, some of them were refilling pans, all kinds of things, cutting up bread, making salads. Um, we just kept them very busy, and they were a great crew, to the point of, when the last person left, within a half an hour, we were done and out of there, which was great. Because they knew what to do. This is how it looked all set up. Here we go, as people walked in. There we are, cutting up the bread, the final breads. And the salad's ready. Pouring the water. And that's our musician, Sandy, who did a great job and captivated the people. So that was the end of the event, then we had gone to, now we're shopping again. So, um, it's fun, take a group of kids, and we took one afternoon and went up, and they, they, they had their calculators, and they were figuring out how much we had. They had the budget, knew how much we could spend. We ended up having, like, in the past, I've said we've tried to fill thirty bags, that's usually been the request. This year it was forty-eight bags. So it tells you a little bit about the need in the community, too. So we were happy to be able to do that, but that was a chore. So it was forty-eight of everything we got, so filling a couple of big trucks to get that all done. But these guys are here, they are really trying to determine which was the best value there when they were buying, so that was kind of a good experience, too. Filling up the trucks that afternoon. And then we had it all spread out in the commons, and they packed them all into bags, and they went off to the, to the police department. We were able to service forty-eight, along with not only bags of food, but in it, we were able to put, um, a gift certificate, two handkerchiefs for each one of those forty-eight, um, bags, which was great. So our total was, we ended up with thirty-four hundred dollars in ticket sales, which was much bigger than we're used to. Um, the musician was paid for, as I said, um, by Burpee Hill Construction, which was great. The bread was all donated, the chicken was donated by a local caterer, and the ice cream from the, um, the Quack Shack, and pies were made by teachers. So a lot of things didn't have to take, be taken off that top price. So it was a really successful event, and we'll do something like it next year, and we'll see how much we change it up and so forth. But the kids do love it, and they all come out for that piece. So, that's my presentation. No questions? You're welcome.
I don't know if it's like you.
This year, what do you think made it more popular this year? Was it, like, the musician? Is it because, like, the partnership with the livery, you got a broader reach? Or is that like, because it was a weekend, not a weekday?
Right, I know we changed up a lot of things.
Yeah.
Um, I think a big part of it was the, the partnership with the livery, because the livery had been doing some of this. So people, we had certain guests that, that loved the dinner concerts, so they were like, we're going to come to each of these dinner concerts. But the other piece is to the outreach that the livery has, we still did the outreach from the school, but it's a bigger or different outreach from there. So people started coming in for that, were interested in it. So I think that's really what made a difference there, which was great.
Great, great for the kids to spend time together doing something outside of school, working sports, and just look like a lot of smiling, happy faces and stuff.
Yeah, they had fun, they actually did, yeah, yeah. It's, it was, the biggest thing was like, we had one room with concerts going, so the biggest thing is, you guys, you can't be loud and fooling around while the concert's going. But they just get in their own world and can do that. They were great, they were great.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to public forum, in accordance with policy BETH, anybody in our public interest in speaking? All eyes are on the mark. Looking for school updates, if we could start out with SCBS.
So I'd hope this month to be able to bring you a draft playground idea. We, uh, were very unsuccessful in meeting over the holidays, I have no clue why. Um, but we were able to meet this last Monday. We looked at two proposals from one company, uh, for the elementary playground, and two proposals from the same company for the preschool playground. The committee really wants to do both, um, they feel if we're doing one, we should do both. So right now, that's roughly about a four hundred thousand dollar, uh, effort to do. Uh, um, it is not cheap. I would say the biggest barriers right now, as I'm learning about this, is New Hampshire has some new laws. Um, Ross may be able to help me out with them, Amanda, particularly around accessibility. And none of that, uh, the material for ensuring access comes cheap. The poured rubber, I'm being found, uh, find out, can't even begin to explain how little we're using, and it's coming in at probably ten percent to twenty percent of the total cost. Um, I have had some recent conversations with local administrators who have also done projects or are looking to do projects. They were able to give me some other names, because our one other company has basically disappeared. Uh, we didn't receive another proposal from them after we asked for some, uh, changes. So I was looking to see if I could find any other companies who could give us, uh, just an idea of what else is out there. Um, and I actually found two more, and I've reached out to them, and due to the holidays, wasn't able to get them in in December. But they're both very interested in coming in. Uh, one of them comes courtesy of Brantham, who just completed or is completing a very expansive project. That's probably in the neighborhood about a million dollars with all said and done with the drainage issues they have on their field and the equipment. So, working on that. Our holiday concert was in the month of December, and it was a huge success. Our students did great, our staff was there to support, and Mr. Edgar did a great job with it. So I'm very proud of them, uh, couldn't have gone off better. Our SPTO, I really want to thank them for the continued support. Uh, we know how busy the holidays are, but they take on a lot during the months of, uh, they, uh, November and December. They're getting the pie sale going down, that's happening down at the Marifaline, or the Five K, Five K. Uh, they are preparing, they're doing the Harbor Shopping Event, or as a fundraiser, and they prepare for the January raffle. And they just get it all going without a hitch, they make it look easy, I'm very impressed by it. Uh, love partnering with them, love working with them to make things, good things happen for our kiddos. Um, and those companies who donate for those things to happen are just awesome. Uh, I think I counted twenty different, twenty-two different individuals who are responsible for the prizes this year. It, it's just an amazing, um, sense of community I get out of that. Our winter activity program, the first week was this last Friday, we had ninety of our hundred and seventy-three students participate up at the mountain. That's, I think, seven more than last year, like we said, eighty-three or eighty-four last year. Um, but I can tell you this, these are the barriers that we're up against. Last year, the price was two hundred and sixty-seven dollars for lesson, lift ticket, and, um, rental. This year is three hundred and ten dollars, that's a fourteen percent increase over year to year. But I couldn't be more proud of our, um, community. We gave out, uh, twenty-two full or partial scholarships to families who have a need. Uh, how that works is they filled out a form, um, for a number of them, we know a lot of the factors. Sometimes there was a conversation, and we worked with them to figure out what could you, what could you pay for? Um, so we gave out a little over five thousand dollars, and that's courtesy of, um, the, the Sunapee Area Ski Club, or Ski Association, I can't remember which one it is. And our SPTO. I couldn't be more proud of our community. That is not something that is small right there. That takes a lot of people, um, and it makes me very proud to be a part of this area. Um, Amanda and Sandy Olin worked with NESA, um, they're based out of Mount Sunapee. They're the New England Healing Sports Association, so that some students who may have some barrier to being able to do it independently can have a little more focused and knowledgeable instruction around how they can participate in skiing and snowboarding. All around, I'm just impressed by our community to be able to, no matter what, we remove the barriers for our kids to be able to do things. We don't leave anyone behind. Um, we partnered this year with a lot of different other activities than skiing and snowboarding. Um, we brought back Lego Your Mind, which was last used about eight or nine years ago. Um, they do activities with Legos and STEM. Um, we partnered with the LSPA for this, and they're doing a New Hampshire animal study, particularly focused on winter and the, the environment we're in right now. Um, the Creation Place out of New London is coming and doing pottery with our students. Full Circle Farm are sending several students over there for horse, horsemanship. Um, and then the school staff volunteered to share their passions. So we have our nurse, Kathy Butcher, who wanted to teach knitting. So she has about nine or ten kids, and you couldn't find a more emphatic group, we're excited about knitting. Um, we had a, we had a parent who volunteered to do card making along with pottery, because pottery didn't feel like they could fill for five weeks, and I was nervous about that. So I was able to pair those together, and they're doing alternating weeks, and it's really, uh, exciting to get parents into this program. Um, Adam Glass, who normally doesn't see students at our building, uh, is teaching karate, and that's one of, uh, of the staff's fan favorites, we love seeing that. Um, so just overall, it was a great first week, we had our hiccups, uh, we're working through them, and we couldn't ask for, you know, better weather right now. Hopefully that snow's, uh, good for, not this Friday, because we have PD, but next Friday. And that is it for me.
Moving on to SMHS. Go ahead, Mr. Flader.
All right. So, as the school year draws closer to halfway over, uh, student morale remains steady. In the high school, there's a sense of tension as midterms come looming over the horizon. In sports, the basketball teams have had wavering success, and ski teams are currently lamenting the lack of snow. I recently actually went to talk to some of the middle school students to get their thoughts on their experience at SMHS. And first of all, I just have to give credit to our middle school teachers. The middle schoolers were remarkably well spoken and shared what they were wanting. Uh, the main thoughts I gathered were the dissatisfaction over dress code, and they actually had a very, they were very pointed about their desire for more social opportunities for safe, inclusive interaction between themselves. And as always, high school stories continue to be around, workload and scheduling. That is, that is mine. Good for tonight?
Sounds like they want recess.
Don't we all?
Yeah, yeah.
It just seems to me that they're unhappy with dress code.
That was, that was, that was a couple, that was actually one person who said that, so it was, it was mostly, you know, I can't wear, you know, everything that I have. You know, it's been since I was in sixth grade as well.
I have been curious if they can't wear pajamas.
Pajamas, yes, I've known.
Pajamas.
No, no pajamas, no pajamas.
We will stick with that rule, by the way, we're not trying to have pajamas.
Yeah, it's like a little weird, it's good.
Yeah, yeah. I'm laughing because, uh, the, the, uh, the high school student council is, is, they do a great job of coming up with these spirit days, and, and they'll come up with, um, very good ideas, and so one, one, around Christmas time, they were like, let's have a flannel day, and I just, like, I did this, I wrote that down. So that means we're just going to have pajamas for another day. And they were, and they were, they were great, they were like, because I'm like, I just don't want another pajama day, and they were like, flannel shirts. I'm like, there we go. So they, they, they really worked well in, in taking those things, and they take a lot of responsibility, so that, that, uh, that, and that would be that. Um, on a positive note, it, it kind of similarly, we, we did meet with the, uh, the high school, uh, principal's advisory this week. Uh, and one of the things we talked about was, uh, was student scheduling and get their input, um, as we go into that process, uh, usually in February. February vacation is usually when we do that, we're going to do it a little bit earlier this year. Uh, but what was nice is they didn't have a whole lot, you know, I think that they have a trust that we're going to offer them a fair amount of classes, at least, has to be one. Um, I think they have an understanding of, um, some of the, some of the difficulties or the challenges that come with it. But it was great, I'm like, really, I want information from you guys. And in the end, the one that came up was, was pretty accurate. I had some high school students said, we, you know, we really like when you have the phys ed class at the end of the day, seventh period, and that wasn't offered this year. Uh, which is true, and we offered it to the middle school this year, but it was interesting, because I'm like, that's what I want, like, that's, that's very accurate. That's, that's a class that has traditionally been pretty popular, um, and we don't usually, when something's popular, we usually don't do away with it. Like, there's certain things that we know are successful, and we try to keep it with that, so. Um, there wasn't a whole lot of input on that, but I think that by and large, they feel the schedule runs pretty well. We are getting, as, uh, Mr. Flader just left, uh, we are going into midterms, so midterms will be next week. Uh, we kind of like how the schedule works with that this year, where a lot of times, when we have the Monday, Tuesday off, we'll like run the Friday, and then we'll have a couple of days, and then we'll run, it'll kind of be a staggered exam schedule. Uh, but because this year's students don't have school on Friday and Monday, the exams are just run Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, so, um, it's, it's going to work out well. Um, Aladdin Junior Auditions, uh, took place actually today, so we are on schedule to run a spring musical. Uh, I was not able to see Ms. Christensen after the auditions today, so I don't know how they went. Um, and, uh, interesting again, as David just left, which, which I understand, but, uh, we're going to do the Broadway trip again, so we, we did it pre-COVID. Um, I was going to laugh, because David went on that trip, and we did it at Christmas time, which we will not do again, um, because it was so, it was so crowded. Uh, but we are going to do this here, uh, April sixth, and students, right now, are going to have the possibility of going to Wicked, Harry Potter, or Hamilton. And so those are going to be, uh, so the students will be responsible for the cost of their ticket, uh, but we have used parking funds, um, for the bus. So we'll, uh, we'll see how that goes, we'll look forward to that. Uh, yeah, it's pretty academic right now, kids are, they're, they're getting ready, and, and, uh, it's a, it is a little stressful for them, but we kind of, Uh yeah, it's pretty academic right now, kids are, they're, they're getting ready and and uh it's a, it is a little stressful for them, but we kind of our goal is not to stress them out, but our goal is to get them used to routines that we'll, that they will largely face later on, so being used to studying and and uh getting those exams is good practice for them.
Superintendent update.
Thank you, we have a district-wide PD day Friday, uh we have a couple of great guest speakers lined up for us in the morning. We have Allison, kind of like, turn on, turn this down, please, please.
Minnetale.
Yeah, she got that.
Oh, then I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know if it works, but I got it off their website, so Tamposa, uh she's an attorney, uh who we use in our special department, she's coming and speaking to our our teachers and our contractor, about the legal responsibilities of an I E P. Uh and after Allison, uh we have her to be joined by Jason Salgo. Uh I had an opportunity to listen to Jason, Jason works for the Arab Security and Privacy Company. Uh Jason is a, is the global data privacy emergency response and cyber counterintelligence expert. And so Jason, when stuff goes wrong in the country, with cyber Jason goes. Uh Jason lives in St. Anthony, Hampshire, uh again, I heard him speak one or two months ago. Uh he's, he's frightening to listen to because of stuff that goes on in our worlds that not only in the world of education, but just in our cyber world. Uh it's, it's a great opportunity for us to hear and learn as educators about, you know, schools, but even more so just about our private individual sort of online habits and what's going on behind those screens that we have no idea and how long it's been going on for and what potential hazards come out of that. So looking forward to a, a great morning with those two guest speakers and then both individual buildings have uh events going on that afternoon. We uh, I, I had a pop-in visit uh from the chair of the current school board yesterday. And um, Aaron, I believe, Aaron, uh and he is very interested in our boards coming back together and starting another conversation. Um uh there, the, the coordinator's looking to do some strategic, some different strategic things with their school, I think Jordan did more because he has a school coordinator coming up Tuesday, they don't know about it yet, so I guess we don't know if he will want putting it out there, uh but there's some interesting things you're looking at, uh which I think, you know, brings us back to the table on how some of the important continue to interact uh educationally, uh and what services protection we need to provide or can't provide, and how we maybe can share uh things moving forward. So he asked, I said, you know, again, based upon what happened last year, the board certainly wasn't close to continuing conversation, as a matter of fact, they they wanted to make sure that happened. Uh we looked at the calendar and said potentially something the third week of February, and so that's before our break. Uh and I don't know, I'll send an email to the board, maybe like the, the Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday, it's the twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two. I'll send an email to the board just saying what works best, maybe taking an hour, having their board come up, the admin come up, and just sitting out and having a conversation. And listen, they're very uh agreeable to, to just, what is it, let's not gross the writing a little, let's have a conversation about if we can pop in there, what are some of the barriers, what are the things that we can agree upon, and then if we feel like there's a place we can move forward from, then we potentially can move forward from. But at that point, Tabell also have a view of their strategic, um potential strategic advances, I'll say, uh within the school district and have a better direction on where they need to be going, and how that may work with us in the coming summer, so. Uh yeah, I'll send you an email and we can set something up. Uh I just wanna put up there, uh we did, again, we had snowstorm the other day, um our Alma alert system, our student benefit system, Alma has an alert system, we're utilizing that. Um apologize if there was a date error, but we're still finding out that people, some people for some reasons are getting these calls and hangups. And so if anyone's listening to this, or you know somebody that'd like to call and hang up, and didn't get a text message or a call or an email, please help them just reach out to the S A U's here, check on that status through that Alma system. Uh based upon some preliminary stuff, we feel like we're all over eighty, we've got almost ninety percent of the folks got their message. One or two or both, or one fashion or another, but there were still some people that we know that uh just didn't get a, get a phone call, phone call and a hangup. And so we wanted to alleviate that and continue to add into the winter, winter months. Uh I will be holding my second community conversation on January seventeenth at the Yadda Library at five thirty. Uh topics for that day, we'll be reviewing, uh again, I have to cover budgets and warrants, but I've invited our two legislators, uh Linda and Hope Dow, uh the legislation is in full swing. There are a hundred plus bills that House Set alone, both Linda and Hope sit on, and so gives them an opportunity to speak to some of the legislation that they're supporting, some legislation they're opposed to, and then also giving me an opportunity to sort of tap it all a little bit on some of the legislation that I have some concerns about. Again, we're in the initial stages, uh House Set is waiting four out of five days. Uh it's a very interesting process, again, I know you guys are a little reoofed on it, uh and sometimes it's better not to see how the science gets made, but it's an ugly process, so. Uh and then finally, I just wanna thank the town, my way to Parkland. Uh we got a couple of pop-up storms and they were there and they got so good, they had a straight, they greatly appreciate their efforts and great communication in getting things out and getting us ready, I feel really good about going to them all day.
That's all.
How well attended are the um community conversations you've been doing?
So this will be my second one, the first one, I think we had five people, seven people, uh not too bad. The Yadda Board does a great job of helping promote that and throw it out, and then actually hoping Linda and I are promoting as well. So hopefully there are a few more people.
Do you wanna consider putting it on the um Sunapee Happenings? Cause that's a pretty big distribution list that goes out once a week. I can tell you how to act, like, where to send it to you. It'd be nice to get a little more attendance, right?
Yeah, I think having our two local offices, especially, and it's an older station, I think it'd be really helpful to keep people in June.
Moving on to action items, looking for a motion to approve the proposed A B C report.
I'll make a motion to approve the proposed A B C report.
I'll second it.
Any uh questions, concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
No opposed?
Thank you to Linda and Jeff, to the applicants who are on the committee.
Looking for a motion to approve the proposed twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school district budget.
I'll make a motion to approve the proposed twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school district budget.
I'll second.
Questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve proposed twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school district default budget.
I'll make a motion to approve the proposed twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school district default budget.
I'll second that motion.
Questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No opposed? And finally, approve the proposed twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school district warrant articles.
I'll make a motion to approve the proposed twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school district warrant articles.
Second?
I'll second.
Questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No opposed, passes. Moving on to information items.
Uh just more quickly, uh permission to buy my safety electric schools up and running. It's, it's quite a, it's quite a thing to witness, and so we felt, uh knowing that we're potentially proposing a new one, while we are now proposing a new one, passing the warrant articles, that we like to have an open house down there from four to seven and just open the doors, let people come in, take a look, ask some questions. So myself and maybe some folks who want to stop by, uh but if they haven't seen it yet, it's your opportunity to take a look at it and see how it all works. The delivered session, I just, the reminder, we have that in February, and the last is the Harvard Model Congress trip. The energy carrying trip, it's a trip that takes an honest week and overnight, I approve the trip, our policy just basically informed you that it did.
See. I'm gonna look for a motion to approve manifest as written.
Make a motion to approve the manifest as written.
I'll second that motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Seeing no opposed? And we're moving on to agenda items for next meeting.
So we'll have the uh twenty-four, twenty-five calendar. We'll have probably a recap of the delivered session, that's the fifth, that's two days before. Um and we may potentially have a tuition rate.
Anybody in the board have anything? Uh we have no request to go into a R S A maybe one eight three, so look for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Passes.